Johnson with Trinity United Methodist Church. Everyone, if you please so choose, please stand. And remain standing for our nation's flag. Please silence your cell phones. Thank you.
Holy God, we thank you today for those gathered here in this room. For those who have answered the call of leadership for our city. We lift them up to you today. We also give you thanks for all in our city who work hard every day to make this a place of joy and love and hope. God, we pray for wisdom and discernment as they lead and guide the city as they make plans for the future. God, let us not plan in vain, but plan by your power and your spirit. And God, we lift up all those slated for committees and commissions. God, we pray that you would bless them and bless those committees and this committee and those gathered, that they may serve you well and that peace and justice and love and hope may reign in our city this day and forevermore. In Jesus' name.
Amen. Please join me in our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Today, we have one presentation.
Mayor, can we do roll call first?
One proclamation. And may I have the roll call, please?
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's okay, thank you.
Mayor Muton?
Present.
Mayor Protem Samuel?
Present.
Councilmember Durio?
Here.
Councilmember Getz?
Present.
Councilmember Turner, absent. Councilmember Felschah?
Present.
And Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Councilmember Turner just walked in.
Present.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have one presentation today by our city health director. Mr. Kenakoma, would you please come forward? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. This is our weekly COVID report. Really have some good news to report. Actually, when we look at our 14-day running average, from September 1 through October 1, we've seen a 45% decrease.
Oh, thank God.
We've also seen a 53% decrease in hospitalizations.
Oh, thank God.
A 49% decrease.
Decrease in ventilator use, as well as a 39% decrease in the number of people that's in our ICU. So that's good news.
That is.
But I want us to be cautiously optimistic because we have the holiday seasons are coming and we know families will be gathering. So we need to be still mindful of wearing our masks if we're not vaccinated. And again, we still want to encourage people to get vaccinated. Last year, if we could think about last year. Last year, we didn't have a vaccine, but we did have public health measures in place. We had mandated masks, social distancing, no indoor dining, schools was doing virtual. So last year, we had a total of 207 deaths last year. This year, January 1 through yesterday, we've had a total of 301 deaths with the vaccine available. So with that being said, we still see that this pandemic is really the pandemic of the unvaccinated. Even though our hospitalizations are down, as of yesterday, 94% of the people in the hospital related to COVID was unvaccinated. 100% of the people that's on ventilators in our local hospitals are unvaccinated. So we still are encouraging everyone to get vaccinated. Because again, this vaccine that we do have is our best weapon. And what we trying to fend off is another variant to emerge. When we still have a lot of people unvaccinated, that allows for this virus to spread. And that's when we start dealing with these different variants. So vaccinations are way, way down. Early in the year, we were averaging over 1,000 per day at our health department in vaccinations. For the entire week of October the 5th through October 11th, we only administered 971 doses for that whole week and where we were averaging 1,000 a day. So again, we just want to encourage everyone to encourage families and friends to get vaccinated because this vaccine does work. It keeps you out of the hospital. It can keep you from being put on the ventilator and ultimately, it can keep you alive. So we have a kind of mixed report here, but the numbers are going down. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Coleman, for a great report. And we'll take any of the good news any way we can get it.
Yes, ma'am.
We appreciate it. Do anyone have any questions or any discussion? You may be excused. Thank you so much for your report. At this time, I would like to read at the close of the city council meeting, the council will hold an executive session to consider matters related to contemplating or pending litigation in accordance with Section 551.071 of the Government Code, Jefferson County, Texas, versus the City of Beaumont, Texas, Cause Number B-198481. At this time, we have a wonderful, wonderful proclamation to read. It is October and it is the month of pink for breast cancer and also ovarian cancer awareness. And I have the proud honor of reading this proclamation today. Whereas September and October are National Ovarian and Breast Cancer Awareness Month, respectfully, and our choices and actions have the power to protect the most vulnerable among us. And whereas ovarian cancer is rare and deadly and known as the silent disease with vague symptoms, and whereas there are no early ovarian cancer screening tests, and consequently, many women are diagnosed with the disease at an advanced stage. Whereas risk factors include a family history of breast or ovarian cancer and any woman who experiences persistent symptoms, including abdominal or pelvic pain, pressure, swelling, or bloating, should talk with her healthcare provider. Whereas breast cancer is the most common cancer among American women, except for skin cancers. And approximately 1 in 8 women in the U.S. will develop invasive breast cancer during her lifetime. Whereas this year, it is estimated that 302,960 women will be diagnosed with either breast or ovarian cancer. 57,370 women will die from these diseases in the U.S. Whereas it is imperative that women speak to their doctors and healthcare providers about these cancers and become educated about cancer symptoms and risk factors, as well as receive a yearly mammogram, which is recognized as the single most effective method for detection of breast cancer. And whereas to heighten awareness of these diseases, Gift of Life will host the 11th Annual Julie Richardson Proctor 5K Run, Monster Dash in downtown Beaumont on Saturday, October 30. Whereas Gift of Life annually provides thousands of free breast cancer screenings and diagnosis, mammograms, ultrasounds, biopsies, with access to cancer treatment to medically undeserved Southeast Texas women. Whereas Gift of Life has helped extend the lives of nearly 275 women whose breast cancer was detected through its free services. Now therefore, our Robin Muton, Mayor of the City of Beaumont, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of September as ovarian cancer awareness month and October as breast cancer awareness month. And on this day, Tuesday, October 12th, as Gift of Life Saves Lives Day in Beaumont and ask all citizens to become informed. Accordingly, I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Beaumont to be a fix signed this day, October 12th, 2021. Mayor Robin Muton and receiving the proclamation today will be Mrs. Norma Sampson and bring anyone with you, Ms. Sampson, from your executive board. Thank you so very much. Please come forward. Thank you, Norma, for all the work that you do.
Thank you.
Mayor, is it all right when we speak to take our masks off? Thank you so much for this opportunity to share the important information that you've just shared in the proclamation. We thank the mayor and the council members. As y'all know, we've been doing this now for nearly 30 years. And so as COVID has certainly presented the fissures in our healthcare services, it's really illuminated the need that we've known for so long, that there are certainly a level of disparities. And all women and men deserve the opportunity to have the access to healthcare that's so essential and that will save their lives. And so for that, we are extremely appreciative of individual businesses and companies and everyone in the community that supports our cause. As a local nonprofit, we simply wouldn't be sustainable without that support. So during the month of October, it's an opportunity certainly to heighten awareness because each one of us have to be the steward of our own health and encourage everyone to get screened for all medical tests. But it gives us a chance to talk about ovarian and breast cancer. And so with that, we have grassroots initiatives and different individuals that are supportive of our cause. And one of which is here is the Beaumont Police Department. I think maybe you've seen it over the years. They have a pink patrol car that's wrapped with a ribbon and they're everywhere. Haley is so sweet that they both take that car out to all community events, irrespective if it's a fundraiser for the Gift of Life and it's about heightening awareness. As we're going to be hosting our walk that we do each year, it's really about walking the pavement to heighten awareness and to save lives of women. As the proclamation noted, ovarian cancer, although the statistics are low, but if it's you, it's important and that affects your life. And unfortunately, Julie Richardson Proctor was 51 when she succumbed to the disease, had insurance, had seen her doctor, but just the information about the symptoms weren't out there. So each year, when we have the opportunity to be here and share that, we hope that it will be a beacon of information and inform and save the life of someone in your life that matters to everyone in the community. So I thank you on behalf of the Gift of Life. If I could for just a moment, I do have our wonderful officers that are with us. Linda Domino was gracious, kind, benevolent. When we lost our beloved President Nell Morris, who had been the leader, the helm of our organization for 25 years, who suddenly passed away, Linda very graciously took the baton and agreed to help us through this next interim. And so Linda Domino is with me. Dean Calcode, who is not just our token male for our prostate cancer, but he's hand in glove with us as we also battle ovarian and breast cancer. And Dora Nesby, who has been such a leader in the community, is one of our officers. So may I ask if anyone would like to say something?
Sure.
Mayor, I just want to thank you and every member of our city council for your endorsement. That means so much to us and it helps us with our program to spread the word. And we want to thank you with all of our hearts. Thank you.
Thank you.
To the mayor and the council, it is my honor to have represented so many people on this board since the inception of the Gift of Life. I serve as a treasurer of this group and I'm most honored. And I want to thank you for your continued support of all the projects and all the activities that we do under the name of the Gift of Life. It is lifesaving to so many people in our community. And not every city can say that they have a gift of life. But we are grateful to Regina Rogers for having established this outstanding organization. And we thank God for as long as we can, we will be here to help everyone that we can. It's my honor to be here today.
Thank you.
We were a cancer family. I was diagnosed with prostate cancer and survived it. My wife was diagnosed with breast cancer. And despite five years of fighting it, she was not successful. But during that particular time, we became interested in this particular program, which was just beginning to develop and becoming used. And so we both entered, did whatever we could do in order to make it familiar in the community and be helpful to all of you. So we're thankful to those who have been responsible for this and we're grateful for your support that you have given us. And we ask you to continue that with those who will need it in the years to come.
Thank you very much. And is it, do we have time for just a quick group photograph?
Sure, sure.
Great, thank you. Dean, don't go.
Thank you so much for coming. I would like to say that I know cancer has struck our family, breast cancer. And I can say that my family member did survive and we're so grateful that they did. But because of this organization and the heart and love that Regina Rogers have for our community, we're so blessed to have this. Thank you for all that you do and we will see you on October 30. Thank you. Now is the time for any citizens who wishes to speak. If you would like to make a public comment on the consent agenda or items number 1 through 9, if you have not already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room, hand it to the clerk to the front of the room. You will have three minutes to speak. The green light will come on when it's your time to speak and the red light will come on when it's your time to end. So if anyone would like to speak?
I don't have any, Mayor.
Okay, there's no one. So at this time, I would like to call for the vote for the approval of the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mayor, before the council considers the consent agenda, Consent Item B is being amended to take out the proposed appointees to the CDB's advisory board. And the city attorney, Mr. Cooper, can explain the reasoning behind that.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
The reason for the request is, is that the Code of Ordinances provides eight categories of industry, hotel, restaurant, museum, attraction, and so on and so forth for members of the Convention and Visitors Bureau. And when we noticed that there were eight prospective appointees to that board, none of which fell in one of those eight categories. So in order to fulfill the obligations of the ordinance, we're asking that it be taken off and the people appointed be reconsidered so that we will abide by the ordinance categories in fulfilling those slots.
Okay, so may I have a approval, I'm sorry, discussion? Councilmember Samuel?
Yes. Is it correct that with that, each appointment, each council member has two appointments? One should be from the community at large and one should be specific? Does the charter mention that or is that just the way that it is we've done over the past?
Actually, this particular ordinance does not allow two per council member. It's a board composed of 16 members, eight of which have to fulfill one of the categories listed in the ordinance. And as I indicated, as we look at the numbers of the names of the people who have been slotted to fill those positions, they do not satisfy any one of those eight industries.
So there are 16, so that's...
16 will give you two each with an additional two to be filled, however the council decides.
And half of the 16 has to be from a specific industry.
Yes, and they're listed in the ordinance.
Okay, any other discussion?
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Neal?
So several of these people have been on this committee for the previous term too, correct?
That's correct.
Can you tell us what the subcategories are one more time?
Hotel motel, restaurant, museum attraction, travel, advertising, media, chamber of commerce, and Lamar University. And in addition to those eight categories, of course, there are community at large members to fulfill the 16 slot committee.
Councilmember Samuel?
So with that, it's not saying eight of those have to be from each one of those categories, but eight have to be from one of the categories that's mentioned?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Durio?
Is there any way that we can just change the ordinance to read that it's just two representatives for everyone on the council instead of having all these different categories?
You can, but if you were to talk with the Convention and Visitors Bureau Director, he will tell you that there is value in having these types of people who represent those industries on the board.
I was looking to see if Mr. Conwell was here, but he's not.
I don't think he is.
And I'm assuming Dean understands this ordinance?
He does.
Absolutely, he does.
Because the two that I have was recommended, I mean, I met his approval because I talked to him.
Well, as I indicated, there are eight categories. In addition to those eight, there can be eight community at large members. And as I indicated, these eight that have been presented today, none of which fulfill those industries.
Okay, Councilmember Turner?
I notice we say media. When we say media, it is specific in the ordinance, what type of media we referring to? Are we talking news, podcast, newspaper?
It's not that specific, it's just media.
Okay.
So...
Councilmember Neal?
So you're telling me that none of these people that we nominated are here can be on this committee?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that. Let me clarify and get into a little more detail that I didn't want to have to do. Councilmember Felschah pointed to, or is seeking to appoint to, Councilmember Neal, Councilmember Getz, Councilmember Maderio, each of seeking to appoint to, which leaves the mayor, Turner, and Samuel left with fulfilling the eight categories, which they may or may not want to do with both of their picks. They may want to pick a person at large in addition to a person that fulfills one of the eight.
Well, what I think would probably need to happen is that in all fairness to each council member, that everyone pick a community person and someone pick a category because if not, it's going to leave the three of us left to fulfill the categories. And so we can discuss that.
And that's what brought it to our attention.
Councilmember Samuel?
As I understand it in past times, as we go along, or as the city move forward with attracting... As the city move forward with attracting business to the area, attracting conventions and things like that, they want to have individuals that can reach out into particular genres or particular types. And that was the whole purpose of the Convention and Tourism Bureau.
Correct.
And that's what they were attempting to do, as I understood it.
Correct.
But I do say historically, each council member normally had chosen one person from one of the particular industries and then one person at large. But again, that's leads, and I thought the mayor had normally done the others.
Historically, that may have been the case, but the ordinance does not specifically describe that as...
Yeah, so that's what we did. That was the past practice. Each council member picked one at large and one specific. And then the mayor did, had the additional chosen ones, just for perspective.
Okay, any other discussion? So all in favor of approving the consent agenda, pulling item number B? Please signify by saying aye.
We're not suggesting that you not approve the rest of the resolution.
So we're just going to pull?
Only pulling those Convention and Visitors Bureau appointees.
Okay, so we're just going to pull letter B, correct, from the agenda?
Mayor, Council? Approve, we'd ask you to consider approving the consent agenda as it is.
As it is.
The city attorneys amended the resolution, took out those CDB appointees. Everything else remains the same. It's confusing because we have so many items on here.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus the CDB on B.
I'm second.
Second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carried. May I have the reading of the first item, please?
Mayor and Council, item number one is to consider authorizing the purchase of three garbage trucks for use in the solid waste division. Three garbage trucks would be purchased from Grand or Grande Truck Center Incorporated of San Antonio in the total amount of $1,032,000. The new units will replace three trucks that have surpassed their useful life expectancy. The trucks are used for the collection of residential trash. The existing units would be disposed of in accordance with the city's surplus property policies. Funds were budgeted in the solid waste fund. The administration recommends approval.
You've heard the reading of item number one. May I have a motion, please?
So move for approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Councilmember Durio?
Are these trucks are going to replace some that we already have that's going out of service?
Yes.
How often do we replace, what's the life expectancy of these trucks?
It depends on the mileage and wear and tear, but it's something that we review on an annual basis. And Jeff Harville is our fleet manager here, I think he's on the second row, but that's something that he makes recommendations to the finance department to me, but it's done on an annual basis.
Do you replace them every, buy stuff every year?
We, not every year. Again, it depends on the year and again, look at the mileage, wear and tear. It's not, it's not something every single year. It's reviewed every year, but we come to you when needed.
Councilmember Turner?
Mr. Attorney, the HGAC, you know, for the citizens watching, I had someone call me earlier and asked, how does this normally work? Can you kind of explain the HGAC and how it works, like compared to like bidding? It's not a bidding process, it's a... It's not a bidding process, it's a, I guess it's a Houston Galveston Area Council Purchasing Association?
Are you asking me or asking the man?
I'm sorry, I'm asking, I'm asking, yeah, you.
Yeah, I can answer that.
Yeah, thank you.
The purchasing laws require that we go out and solicit bids. And with what the H G A C does for cities is that they go out and do it prior to, and there's a listing of various vendors that they have vetted and gone through that process. So we just go to that list and select the vendors who have already submitted bids and been chosen and vetted.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor of approving item number one? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carry. May I have the reading of the next item, please?
Mayor and council, item number two is to consider approving the purchase of two new pothole patch trucks for use in the public works department. Each new pothole patcher would be purchased in the amount of $173,945.90. Funds were budgeted in the capital reserve fund. The administration recommends approval.
You've heard the reading of item number two. May I have a motion, please?
So moved to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'll say, thank you, Jesus. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carry. May I have the reading of item number three, please?
Item number three is to consider approving the purchase of three backhoe loaders for use in various city departments. One backhoe would be purchased for use in the parks division. Two backhoes would be purchased for use in the streets division. Total, total pricing in the amount of $312,589 was obtained from Mustang Cat Beaumont. Funds were budgeted in the capital reserve fund. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you. You heard the reading of item number three. May I have a motion, please?
So moved to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carry. May I have the reading of the next item, please, number four?
Mayor and council, item number four is to consider approving the purchase of one street sweeper for use in the streets and drainage division. One sweeper would be purchased in the amount of $286,777. A 2016 sweeper that has a little over 143,000 miles would be maintained at Fleet as a backup unit. Funds were budgeted in the capital reserve fund. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number four. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving item number four? Please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carry. May I have the reading of item number five, please?
Item number five is to consider authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with C D M Smith Incorporated to continue management of the municipal separate storm sewer system known as the M S four permit for the city of Beaumont for fiscal year 2022. The agreement is for professional services to manage the permit. The permit is a requirement by the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality as well as the EPA. The manager of the permit conducts what are known as dry and wet weather screenings at five major outfalls in the city of Beaumont. Under the permit, the city is required to submit an annual report summarizing activities and results of the screenings and other inspections conducted throughout the year, which C D M Smith has successfully completed on our behalf since 2012. The agreement includes implementation of the storm water management plan that details how the city, as well as Drainage District Six, will comply with the permit. If approved, the total services and expenses will not exceed $250,000 without the city's prior written authorization. Funds are budgeted in the general fund. We recommend approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number five. May I have a motion, please?
Moved to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving item number five? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carry. Thank you. May I have the reading of item number six, please?
Mayor and council, item number six is to consider approving the purchase of one loader for use in the solid waste division. One Case Will Loader would be purchased from Associated Supply Company of Beaumont in the amount of $209,046.90. The new loader will replace a 1992 unit, which has exceeded its expected service life, and it will be disposed of in accordance with the city's surplus equipment policy. Funds were budgeted in the solid waste fund. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number six. May I have a motion, please?
So moved for approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving item number six? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carry. May I have the reading of item number seven, please?
Item number seven is to consider approving the purchase of three mowers for use in the parks department. The three mowers would be purchased for use at the Henry Humbert Golf Course. Total pricing in the amount of $132,836.10 was obtained from Brookside Equipment Sales of Houston through the Buy Board contract. Buy Board is a cooperative purchasing association that complies with the state of Texas's procurement statutes. Funds were budgeted in the capital reserve fund. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number seven. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second? Any discussion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Durya?
I just wonder why it costs so much for a lawnmower?
Well, these are utilized at the golf course. One's a fairway mower and two are what they call greens mowers. And they're, they're expensive. They're specialized equipment that's, that we utilize. You can look at, you know, we're replacing a 2012 model for the fairway. We're in the one, 2006 model for the greens, another 2013 model for the greens. So you need this equipment to mow the golf course properly, but you're right, they're very expensive.
Well, and also see where it says it's precision cut moors, which gives the greens and the golf courses a pretty cut.
Right.
Uh, one other thing I would like to ask, uh, the other moors that we're currently using, can they be used throughout the departments for grass cutting?
They could, but they're not very reliable and fleets recommending that they be sold as surplus equipment. They look at that, I mean, they're, they're, if we have a lot of mechanical problems with these units, then it's better to sell them.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner?
With the newer ones costing this and the used ones being sold, is it a pretty decent profit knowing when you sell one of the used ones? If we, if we ever did in the past with the new ones costing this much, you know, selling the used ones?
Does that offset the cost?
Yeah, it did.
No, no.
Yeah, not a pretty good price.
Again, these are older models that usually have a number of problems by the time they get to this point.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor of approving item number seven? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carry. May I have the reading of item number eight, please?
Item number eight is to consider approving the award of a contract to Lart Group Incorporated of Warren, Texas for the asbestos abatement and demolition of the structure located at 2600 Girollamo. The city red-tagged the structure located at 2600 Girollamo due to the unsafe condition. Bids were requested for the asbestos abatement and demolition. Six vendors were notified, four bids were submitted. Lart Group provided the low qualified bid in the total amount of $114,000. Funds are budgeted, are available in the general fund. The administration recommends approval.
You've heard the reading of item number eight? May I have a motion, please?
Moved to approve.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Councilmember Getz?
Where is, what is this structure? Is it a commercial or residential?
It's an old school site located off of Concord Road, close to Babe's Harriers Park. And it's owned by a group out of Michigan at this time, is that right?
Yes, yes, sir. It was the old Booker T Washington Elementary School, but it's currently owned by a, um, a group called Beaumont Charter Academy out of Oak Park, Michigan. Has, when was the last time it was occupied? It's been probably at least ten years.
Or more?
Or more. It's been a while.
Okay, councilmember Neil?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Manager, is the city planning on leaning this property?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor of approving item number eight? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carry. May I have the reading of item number nine, please?
Mayor and council, item number nine is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance vacating and abandoning a portion of Cottonwood Street located between Concord Road and St. Helena Street, City of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. Beaumont Independent School District would like to encompass this portion of Cottonwood as a part of their new bus parking facility. A joint public hearing held on June the 21st, planning commission recommended six to zero to approve the request with three conditions that are listed in your staff report. The administration recommends approval with the same conditions.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number nine. May I have a motion, please?
So moved for approval.
May I have a second? With the condition? Thank you. And the second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question, Mayor.
Councilmember Neil?
Oh, thank you. Up at the top, it shows the three conditions, but down here under the recommendations, it's showing two.
Yeah, number three's been met and that probably should have been stated clearly in the, in the memorandum. So they've met number three and that's probably the reason why.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carry. Uh, Mr. Manager, can, uh, we're going to move to a public hearing?
Mayor and council, you do not need to consider item number 10 unbeknownst to us. The building was demolished, we think, this weekend. And, um, so there's no need to move forward with this item.
Okay, so we're going to close it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And it's hidden in the back, Mayor, we do have one discussion item. With that pink page in the back, orange page.
Okay. Can you please, um, take us into the discussion item? Thank you.
Mayor and council, it's to review and discuss a proposal to utilize a private ambulance company to help respond to medical calls and be an extension of Beaumont Fire EMS. And Chief White's going to come forward and, and lead the item.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, council manager and city attorney. Let me start by saying that I brought Max Millian, a director of EMS, Chief Singler, Brad Hebert, communications chief, and AMR representative for any and all anticipated questions that you might have. A little history, Beaumont EMS, at the height of the pandemic, the state approved a strike team consisting of two units, which included AMR on deployment, um, between July 23rd, 2020 and, uh, October 12th, 2020. Of course, COVID calls increased. Beaumont EMS has experienced an increase in calls from 2010, from a call volume of 16,233 calls for service. Study increased during that period of time to a current call level from fiscal year 21, which we're not complete with, of 20,004 calls for service.
I'm sorry, 20,000?
20,004 calls for service currently. And we haven't completed 2021 yet. Uh, so the call volume is there. AMR was one of those ambulances that came and responded to calls. And AMR, it was referred to as American Medical Response. What we're proposing is a subcontract with AMR to run calls, medical, both B O S calls, basic life support calls, and advanced life support calls in addition to the number of ambulances that we keep in service. One of the problems that has occurred is, again, the increase in call volume, the shortage of paramedics, and the decreased availability of a couple of other ambulances that have agreed to rollover calls in addition to Beaumont EMS. So AMR is applying to be supplement us in that as a designated service licensing for Beaumont, starting off with one unit running only emergency medical calls. So they'll be available to us, starting off on a 12-hour rotation, moving to a 24-hour rotation, and proposing to add an additional unit down the line to designate toward emergency services. They've already contracted with a building at 2510 North 11th to house that unit. And they are going to adhere to our medical director's guidance and train along with Beaumont EMS, Beaumont Fire Rescue personnel. We propose a date to start of December the 1st, 2021. And at this time, and that will be at no cost to the city of Beaumont. So at this time, I'll take any questions from Max or any other representative that's here.
So one of the questions I would like to ask is, you said it would be medical emergency, meaning that they would not take, they would not take COVID calls?
Yes, they'll take COVID, both basic life support calls and advanced life support calls.
Okay.
Under our protocol.
Uh, okay, under the city protocol.
Under the city protocol, approved by our medical director.
Okay. That was my question. Councilmember Neil?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Chief, you said this comes at no cost. Nothing's free. Can you explain that one?
They'll, they'll bill at the same rate that Beaumont EMS is currently billing at.
And they'll take care of their own collections.
They'll take care of their own collection, that is correct, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Getz?
In the past, there have been conversations from time to time about privatizing ambulance service. And it's always been the position, I thought, of the city that we really not like to do that because we want to be able to control the standards and, uh, the training of the people that we have that are responding to citizen emergencies. And so this seems to be taking a step in a different direction. Although I'm sure you've had good experience with these, but I'm trying to understand how that's always been the previous position and now we might be going in a different direction.
I'll, I'll let Max explain, but the position is, is that they'll meet the same standard, but I'll let Max explain that to you.
And before you explain, because we've worked together, all of us for a long time. So the city's utilized private ambulances on and off for 30-plus years when needed. So what's happened, what's changed now is there's a shortage of paramedics and all over the country right now. It's tough, it's tough to hire people. Second, when they're bringing folks, transporting folks to the hospital, they're tied up for hours sometimes, right?
Minimum two hours.
Yeah, so that's, that's been a problem. And, you know, the council blessed it, but we made this move into the fire department, which has really, worked really well. And the credit goes to the chief and Max and staff for making it work. We've had firefighters that are normally, for example, working on a pumper or driving a pumper, driving our ambulances just to make it work so we have the right number on the streets at a time. But, but to answer your question, we've utilized privates again at different times. Sometimes for a year... for a year or two at a time, sometimes we back off, but it's just a matter of when, when they're needed. So the chief has worked with this company and found them to be, um, very competent folks, so that's why they're making this recommendation today, but.
Yeah, I, I thought private ambulances were primarily used to, uh, transport people to dialysis and, and things like that, and then if there was, uh, we had a contract for like a rollover when we were at zero level, that we would have someone in that event.
We, we, we do, uh, councilman, but we also, in the past, like, uh, city manager emphasized, we had two agreements back in ninety-seven with TransStar and Ameristat, very, very similar to the agreement that we're proposing, uh, to, uh, sign with AMR. And I'll let Max speak to the, uh, level of care.
Okay.
Max, also, but one of the, uh, chief, one of the things you just, the question that I asked, you said that they would be trained by Max and fall under our city of Beaumont training.
Yes, ma'am.
In our protocol.
Yeah, I'll let Max explain.
Thank you.
More detail.
Yes, sir, so one thing that we want to make sure that we don't lose is the clinical practice, uh, that we serve the communities, and one of the stipulation is simply they will follow our protocol, which they already have a copy of, as well as meeting our training standards, our clinical practice. We do have QA, QI in place to manage those oversight and to review those calls to ensure that their medics are adhering to our standards, and that will not be decreasing any capacity whatsoever. So they are attending our training program, and our FTOs and Training Division will have the oversight to make sure that all those members meet those requirements.
How many ambulances will be available?
We're gonna start with one, uh, on twelve-hour rotation. Uh, of course, they're having trouble, just like any employer, you are, is finding competent people, and we're, they've been assured that they're gonna hire qualified people that are gonna meet our standard. Uh, we're gonna move into, down the line, a second unit. We're gonna place that, that unit probably in the southern part of Beaumont where our response times are a little bit higher than we expect.
Thank you. Councilmember Doria?
Would these, uh, ambulances be manned by EMTs or paramedics or one of each, or what?
Just like, uh, any Beaumont units, they were manned by one paramedic, and both begin a training to the standards of our medics, just our units are one paramedic and one non- paramedic.
Councilmember Gitts?
Chief, you mentioned that in ninety-seven, we had contracts with these ambulances, and you've.
Well, not agreements. Yes.
Agreements. And did we eliminate those agreements at some point?
They ran their course. There were two-year agreements that ran their course, and of course, uh, TransStar and Ameristat, I don't think are any longer in business, but this is a proposal for a two-year agreement at any time with a indemnified clause that any party can walk away, uh, with a thirty-day notice.
Okay.
Any other questions? Councilmember Neal?
How many active ambulances does the city of Beaumont have right now?
Right now, uh, we are allowed seven. Here in the last, what, couple months, we've been running, uh, six and seven supplemented with your decision to bring EMS, uh, back into the fire department. And I can tell you, councilman, if we had ten, we'd still fall level zero.
So would a long-term goal be for you guys to start trying to get that number up?
Yes, sir. That is the ultimate goal.
Thank you.
Well, would you also say that COVID is playing a huge part in all of this?
It has, yes, ma'am, it has, but also, um, increased call volume, um, nine-one-one has been utilized quite a bit. This is the thirtieth year of nine-one-one. We did an excellent job of telling everybody to call nine-one-one. We just didn't do a good job telling them why. So we're working on that also, along with some other things, trying to reduce what we call our basic life support calls, you know, the stubbed toe, the back is hurting, and those type calls.
Oh, I was a telephone operator for many years.
Yes, ma'am.
I know what you're talking about.
They're calling for everything.
They're calling for everything.
Mayor, one more thing.
Councilmember Gitts?
Cognizant of your last year mark, and also aware that our population has actually gone down, but our call volume has gone up. Could we do some public service announcements or something to try to communicate the message that you just gave, uh, to get that out there, that you don't call nine-one-one because you stubbed your toe? Uh, you, you know, you call nine-one-one if it's a life or death situation or an emergency. What about PSAs, or how are you, how are you trying to get this?
We're, we're working on that, councilman, uh, along with, uh, redesigning our website, and we're currently gonna be having an event with the Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission, nine-one-one, to promote the thirtieth year of nine-one-one and re-educate the public into what constitutes an emergency. We're not discounting your emergency, we're just saying it doesn't rise to the level of an emergency that you need a EMS unit or a, some other police or fire unit to respond.
Councilmember Turner?
It alarmed me when you said we have currently roughly seven, six to seven, and if you had ten, we can, we can have those ten busy. Uh, was this prior to COVID, it's been that busy, or is this something that's been ongoing?
Uh, I cited the number of increased call volume at the beginning of it from, um, twenty-ten, sixteen thousand calls, twenty-fourteen, seventeen thousand calls, twenty-twenty, nineteen thousand calls, twenty-twenty-one, and we're not out of twenty-twenty-one, twenty thousand calls already for service. So steady increase, uh, on our call volume.
Any other discussion? Well, thank you so very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll plan to bring this to you the next week or two for your consideration to enter into.
Thank you.
Enter into this agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Now's the time for public comment. If you would like to speak or make a public comment, if you have not already done so, please make sure that you fill out the green slip to the back of the room, hand it to the clerk to the front of the room, and she will call your name in the order that the slips are received. You will have three minutes to speak. The green light will come on when it's your time to start, and the green, the red light will come on at the end of your three minutes.
I'm Richard Lord, sixty-nine oh-six Redwood Falls, Pasadena, Texas.
Good after, Mayor, uh, good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Richard Lord. I'm the current chairman of the Plumbers Political Action Committee, and I'm here to speak about the egregious report or news report that was, uh, put out by the Beaumont Enterprise. Uh, not ever has Plumbers Local Sixty-eight PAC Fund ever violated state law. What was sad about that, that whole, uh, article, uh, we would never want to embarrass the mayor, uh, we're big supporters of her, and, and, uh, the members of Local Sixty-eight voted on supporting her. It's not one person, it's not dues money, and all that could have been clarified with a simple phone call. Any one of y'all can Google Plumbers Local Sixty-eight PAC Fund, and the Texas Ethics Commission will tell you that is the GPAC, simple stuff. I mean, anybody that would even look into, uh, being truthful about a news article would have found out, and, and not only do we support the mayor, we've supported several council members, you know, so, you know, when they start disparaging people, you know, it's one thing to, to say something, but without the research, our phones are, were easily accessed. They could have easily called anyone, asked two questions, and would have known what the truth was, and not only us, the operating engineers, the pipe fitters, you know, we, um, are a little disappointed that, that they would take this attitude, and at first I thought it was just a bad article by a reporter, and then when coming in, I see it on the billboard, so I guess it's the whole, uh, Beaumont Enterprise that feels like, uh, there's some kind of violation, but us, along with our attorneys or whoever we need to talk to, we're more than happy to, and, and Mayor, you know, you do a great job, and, and, you know, these are hard jobs. Y'all don't get paid for doing this, you know, and to, to, for someone to slander you or lie about you, that's just going across lines, and, you know, we want to apologize to you, Mayor, and, and hope, hopefully we hadn't embarrassed you, but, uh, uh, we want to write the, uh, record straight and make sure that you know that everything we do is perfectly legal, and me personally, I've been the chairman of the Political Action Committee for over twenty-five years, so, you know, I'm still standing here, ain't gone to jail, no orange jumpsuit, so, you know, I just wanna, uh, let y'all know, and if there's any questions, more than happy to answer them, so.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
I'm Brian Nipfo, thirty-four fifteen Laurel Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. You have to forgive me, I lost my voice a little earlier this week, but, um, I'll be fine. Uh, just wanted to, uh, put the notice out there that we are doing our first annual trunk-or-treat, uh, for Make-Ins Meet and Movie Night in the Park. Uh, so this will be on Halloween, on the evening of, uh, on the thirty-first, uh, at Rogers Park, obviously, in the parking lot, so all of the citizens of Beaumont, bring your little youngsters, your little Beaumotters, we're gonna have the trunks open, everybody's gonna be dressed up, passing out candy around six to six-thirty. Tentatively, when the sun goes down, it takes a little bit of time for the screen to be able to be lit up, and we'll, we'll be paying, playing Hotel Transylvania, which is a PG Kids movie, and, uh, for all the kids who want to come out there, bring a, uh, a blanket, lawn chairs, mosquito spray. We'll have popcorn, I think we're gonna have popcorn out there, too, and so, uh, everybody's welcome to join, uh, Truck-or-Treat, Movie Night in the Park, um, and also, you're welcome to, uh, bring your vehicles, your friends and family, and, uh, line up with us and, and help pass out candy as well as, uh, enjoying the festivities, so that's all. Thank you, guys.
Great, I hope the, uh, weather holds up.
We may jump to a Saturday if, um, it's, if it's in that rain.
Great.
I'm Gregory Wallace, five-fifty-five Elm Street, Beaumont, Texas. Did he leave? Um, Jude Paredes, one-zero-six-two-zero Gate Road, Beaumont, Texas.
Congratulations, Mayor Mutana. I'm so glad that you're elected mayor, but, oh, but the reason I came up here is to turn in evidence to the attending officer in the matter of Jane Doe, one-zero-zero-seven-two-one, suffix one. And this is poor Jane Doe's shoes that she kicked off, uh, right in front of my house, a car pulled up, and I hear this lady and man screaming in there. The lady jumps out and tries to run away with the man, jumps out all of a sudden, grabs her, and she's, it's so violent that her shoes fell off her feet, and so, you know, then the car screeches off, and I'm calling nine-one-one, and so then the officer comes out and he's, and he says, "Well, uh, well, we don't have, uh, uh, resources to pursue that, 'cause you, you can't, can you describe the driver, uh, the, the, the license plate and what model car?" And I said, "No, this happened very fast, it was dark, this was at night." I said, "All I have is her shoes that she kicked off. Oh, we don't have the resources." So I said, "Okay." I said, "Look, you know, I thought about it, he left," and I said, um, "I've seen officers who spend hours investigating citizens who might be going to work. This is their crime, or coming from work. Maybe they're shopping at HEB, didn't have their mask, or maybe someone's walking home and an officer stops and has a lot of time to see, "Why are you walking home?" So the problem is not a lack of resources, but rather a mismanagement of resources. And the police chief is aware of which officers should be removed from city employment, but he is hampered by contract restrictions. The police chief needs the additional tool of a civilian review board so that he would have support for his decisions. So once more, as so many others have done throughout the years, I will plead with this council to establish a civilian review board, not an advice committee that has authority to issue attaboys, a real civilian review board to assist the police chief in, in improving the performance of our police employees. And to close, okay, I'm gonna hand this to the attending, this is the lady's shoes. Maybe a case can be opened, I don't know. Maybe still no, I don't know. Maybe we need new lawnmowers, maybe we do, but in, in any case, also, please pay the jail, which you owe them. Look, you have officers that falsify affidavits and stick people in jail that shouldn't be there, then you're gonna say, "Oh, we can't pay the bill." Pay the bill. You owe the county that money. When you stick someone in jail, you got to pay them. What you need to do is get rid of your corrupt officers that put people in jail who shouldn't be in jail. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm James Eller, twenty-three thirty-two Avalon, Beaumont, Texas.
Excuse me, Officer Riley, would you please remove the shoes? Thank you so much.
Before I start, I know that there's like certain, uh, rules about like, uh, don't say the person's name or something like that, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Should I name like, like, whenever I speak, should I say, "Council, uh, uh, Council Board Member Number Two, uh, City Attorney," though, you know, should I address like that? Would be.
Well, if you get out of line, I'll let you know.
You can use titles.
Titles. You can use titles.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
So altogether, what, what I'm running into, which I, I made calls all day today about different situations, 'cause there was an incident on Facebook with a Ward Two member, which there was a, uh, un, just like things said, basically, seems like I'm being targeted, per se, by the city. However, I made contact with, uh, uh, city attorney, and he said, "No, that's basically a personal, uh, attack." Then after that, I called, uh, the city, uh, community director about the property that I'm thinking that, the, the conversation was about, and I asked for basically, uh, intervention, per se, for that code enforcement officer of Old Town, uh, and he sort of passed the buck, like, "No, it's already involved in the courts," which it's not, because the courts rolled it back on to the city, uh, uh, code enforcement and said that, uh, as long as there's good weather, and then that started with the first week of the hurricane that just didn't hit us, but we prepared for it and whatever else, right? So I ended up having to wait on that, the week of rain and whatnot, so my, my slow progress to get something taken care of is now rolling up to a deadline, and I'm asking my council board member one, and then I'm asking my two-at-large, and I'm asking Mayor, if I can have the city actually work with me when the city has actually had the same technical, uh, or technically has had the same ordinance violation, which they just now corrected, after years of storing materials flat on the ground, being out of code, the city now, uh, now the city has come at me for the same type reasons, however, I'm not given the same amount of years that the city has been given to make that correction. Now I have proof when also the city has maintained their innocence in it, saying that they have, uh, uh, made that correction. So I went and took pictures of that day, that they got all their pipes off the ground, the, the streets and drainage over there at twenty-six-ten, Concord, pipes on the ground, overgrown grass, trash is still, because I went and took pictures today, trash is still all on the back of the property. However, the city is holding citizens, as I brought that up, the city is actually holding citizens to a different level of, of prosecution, basically, and I, you know, brought that up to the city or, or, or community development. We're not being worked with like the city is being able to hide what they do, right? They don't comply with their own ordinances, however, they bring citizens under a different microscope and, and persecute and hinder and, and stop us from, you know, living life, liberty, freedom. How is this possible when there's generated, uh, what did I say, a generated e, email from an official city, uh, employee from the supervisor or a supervisor in the streets and drainage has stated September seventeenth that all pipes were off the ground? That was a mess, and it's been a mess for years because I've used Google Maps for years, and I've taken pictures of aerial photos of the property being in disarray. Citizens are not given that same opportunity, and I'm asking for more time, being that it's rolling up on time, I'm just asking for more time before we get to that point. If not, we can go another route with it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
Excuse me, Mr.
William McCullough, twenty-three eighty-five Broadway, Beaumont, Texas.
Thank you. Well, I'm here again from two weeks ago about this water bill that's, uh, for twenty-three eighty-five Broadway. I learned a lot in this amount of time. Uh, I paid one on the seventh, at three fifty-seven thirty-six, like it's been for a year. I found out that the rates are buried in the ordinances, and that's fine if that's what has to be done legally. But it should also be put in the water billing section of the website where people can find it. So I've calculated these things by hand, four different bills, and it's about thirty to forty dollars less. And that's just the four that I've calculated. And this goes back for over a year. But your computers only go back six months. So I don't know what we're going to do about this. Another thing I found out, and I didn't know this until I started investigating, it's not just by consumption, it's by the size of the building. Because if you have four more units in an apartment, it's seventy-five percent of the number of units times the five-eight size meter size for the water. So that's a, for me, that was a fixed cost of a hundred and ninety-five dollars before we ever got to consumption. And that's just not right. Now, it should be by how much a person's water, how much they use, not the size of the building. And now, I can see where this is going. If you went by consumption only, instead of this charging by the unit, you would lose revenue. Well, my answer to that is adjust the consumption rates to where you could generate the same revenue without doing this business of charging essentially the size of the building. So if you have a good amount of units vacant, you're getting the short end of it, or I'm getting the short end of it. So I wish y'all would address this somehow next month. I'll have another bill like this, same thing. And I wish y'all do something about it. I figured these bills by hand, using the numbers that's in the ordinances. And I would.
Well, please.
Because it's the second time he's been up here, I think that our CFO, Mr. Semenow, can speak to the facts only, just tell the council how this works.
Yeah, so he was here last two weeks ago, and we had met with Danette McKins, the Water Customer Service Billing Supervisor, went into the office, and there is a billing error on his bill. So everything that he's speaking about as far as the rates, you know, the seventy-five percent of the units, that's all in the code. It does include a minimum usage, though. So there is some flow that's already calculated into those built-in minimums. But what we need to do, and, you know, we told him we would do this before his next bill, so he hasn't been billed improperly again, but we're going to have to go back and hand calculate those bills that he spoke of. Because for whatever reason, there's like four or five customers out of forty-four thousand that got this constant bill. And so technology's trying to run that down, trying to figure out what that error is. But for these four or five customers, we're going to hand calculate their bill until we get that software glitch resolved.
So do you need to speak with him after council meeting?
The hand calculations that I've made shows that the bills that I've calculated is about thirty or forty dollars per bill less than what actually what this number they keep spitting out.
Right, and we told him we were going to go back and hand calculate all those bills. It's just that at the end of the year, you know, council approved the rate increase, so it took staff a lot of time to get those rates in there, you know, to get updated, to bill all the customers. And also, we're doing our year-end write-offs. But I've already talked to Danette, as soon as I saw him walk in before the meeting, she's working on those calculations right now, and it'll be taken care of before the next bill.
So, sir, they are aware of it. Thank you for your patience and.
Well, once again, I wish that it was just by consumption and not by the number of units.
Well, like I said, the number of units includes minimum consumption, so it's wrong to say it doesn't include consumption, because it does include the minimum consumption, just like we do with every other customer in the city.
You have consumption, and then you have the number of units, and that's a fixed cost.
Well, thank you. Hopefully, we'll get a resolve for you before the next billing cycle. Thank you.
And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. I see Ms. McKins just stepped in, and she's going to. Thank you, Ms. McKins. At this time, we will have councilmember comments, and I will start with you, councilmember Neal.
No comment.
Thank you. Councilmember Samuel.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I want to thank the city manager for a report that came in. And I'd like for us to consider how we will address an issue that's here. On Helbig Road, there's been one person hit each year walking down Helbig Road. There's no sidewalks, and it's very poor lighting. So I'd like the city to now move forward with looking at how we can help eliminate that problem, because there's a housing complex on Mater Road as well as on the first part of Helbig Road. And over the years, like I said, there's been four hit-and-runs, three severe injuries, and five total pedestrians hit over that time, over that five-year period, so that's one a year. So I'd like for us to look at how we can eliminate that problem.
Thank you, councilmember Samuel. Councilmember Felschler.
Thank you, Mayor, but no comment.
Councilmember Turner.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to recognize, in twenty-twenty-one, Texas Travel Awards recognized Cattail Marsh, our facility right here in Beaumont, Texas, the number-one free destination travel facility in Texas. So often, like I say, if we have great things going on in Beaumont, Texas, and for staff, Kyle, and that whole department, I just wanted to give them their kudos during my public comments, let them know I've seen it, and I appreciate the hard work, and I'm thankful to have departments like that in the city of Beaumont.
Thank you. Councilmember Gitts.
October is usually one of the nicest weather months for Southeast Texas, and it's shaping up to be the same this year. This weekend should be spectacular, not just because of the weather, but because we're having Oktoberfest this Saturday at Rogers Park. It's going to begin at three o'clock, and it's going to go on until dusk. We have great activities planned, it's free, so I encourage everybody in the community to come out and enjoy it. And that night, we have the Symphony of Southeast Texas performing their Pops concert. So there's going to be a lot to do this Saturday in Beaumont, and take advantage of the opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Durya.
No comment, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney. Thank you. Well, I would like to say it was a very, very busy Saturday last week. We had Dogtoberfest, and it was a great turnout, beautiful dogs, beautiful weather. And congratulations to all of the winners and everyone that came out and participated. I had some very, very unique costumes in which most of them were handmade, and it was really, really exciting. Our chief secretary was one of the judges, along with three other citizens of Beaumont. So I would like to say that it was a great success. And also, we had, NAACP had the very first Lafayette Spy v. Golf Tournament, and it was absolutely gorgeous out there. It was a great success. And a great golfer, councilmember Samuel, was out there along with our state rep, Joe Desertell. So there were a lot of attendees, and someone came in all the way from Chicago. So it was a beautiful afternoon. But right at the end, just as it was getting hot, it ended. So it ended right on time. Would also like to say that if you paid attention and noticed in today's agenda, we voted on a lot of new equipment for Beaumont. Pothole equipment, new lawnmowers for the golf courses, couple of dump trucks, and a lot of other equipment that we can use to improve our city so that things can move forward. And we're looking forward to doing more great things in the city. On tomorrow, we have a workshop starting at eight AM. Start at nine. That's even better. So we have a workshop tomorrow, the public is welcome. We will be on the first floor at the best, the best year's end, the Lakeside Center. And it's open to the public, and so we will be discussing new and improved things that is going to move our city forward. So if you have an opportunity, please come out. And hopefully, you'll be able to have some input and listen in on some of the new things that this council is going to move forward to improve our city. Also, don't forget Oktoberfest this weekend. It will be a beautiful weekend, and hopefully, everyone will come out. It's always a great event. So please come out and join us for Oktoberfest. And again, thanks for our wonderful staff. And we will recess into executive session. Sure, councilmember Durya.
You jogged my memory when you were mentioning all the equipment. I just wanted to let everybody know that our high-water rescue vehicle has came in, the fire department is currently doing training on it. So hopefully, we don't ever have a use for it, but if we have flooding, we'll be able to rescue, we'll be able to get back there and get the mayor out of there, she won't have to walk through all that water anymore. So, but we do have it, and they're training on it, and we'll be ready if we ever have that flooding again. That's all, Mayor.
Well, councilmember Durya, thank you so much for thinking about me, but guess what? With all of the new improvements that we're doing with the flood mitigation, you won't have to use that rescue truck in my neighborhood, and hopefully, we won't have to use it in any other neighborhood. So with that being said, thank you all for coming out, and we will recess to executive session. Thank you.